Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled and duly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission of Order. And at this time, Commissioner Victor Baal has invited Pastor Danny Rodriguez to lead us in our invocation. Call upon Pastor Rodriguez.
Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for this opportunity that we have as citizens of the city to come together. Lord, I pray for the city commission, each one of them, the mayor, all the commissioners that are here tonight, pray for their families. Thank you for their service to the city. Pray, Lord, that when their term has expired, when they're done serving here, may their legacy, Father God, for this city be remembered as one that was a blessing to the city and to the people of Harlingen. Bless their meeting tonight, Lord, and what is done and what is decided here. We ask that you will give wisdom to these leaders that are here tonight and all the citizens that are here, Father God. Whatever behalf they happen to come tonight, you will give in great wisdom, because all good gifts come from you. We acknowledge them tonight in this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the real liberty which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Glad to have you here to share and be part of our meeting. The first item on the agenda is the public announcement of events.
I had one, but I never saw it.
No, ma'am, we're gonna have the staff read the public announcement of events.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to report and inform you and invite you to our city upcoming events for the city of Harlingen. We have August 31st for Movies in the Park. The movie The Avengers will be presented to the community, and it's gonna start at 8:30. We're also gonna have between 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock kids activities, and then from there, we'll start the movie at 8:30. We're also having hosted by Lone Star Pay Setters at Sports Complex on Rosa Road on the same day, August 31st. We're also planning to have 10:06 de diciembre on Sunday, September the 15th, we'll have a festival from 11:00 to 5:00, and then from 5:00 to 7:00, the civic ceremony at the Lone Star Hill Fairwork. Thank you.
Thank you. We also tomorrow morning have the groundbreaking, or the grand opening, groundbreaking for the Valley Metro Harlingen Vehicle Maintenance Facility. That's next to the Glasscock Fire Station. That'll be at 9:00 AM. All right. Item two is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep conducted August 10th, 2013, Ames Street to 25th Street, from Clifford to Treasure Hills, District 3.
Mayor, just wanted to give a quick rundown on the clean sweep that happened this past Saturday. Here you see some of the volunteers that assisted with the cleanup. They in total, they collected 1.12 tons of debris, and all of that was removed from the area. They also collected tires. A total of 19 tires were picked up from the area. You see here them collecting more debris from various locations in that area, from some of the alleyways as well. September Clean Sweep, and this was held in the Commissioners', the next one will be September the 14th, 2013, which is District 4, Commissioner Sanchez. It's gonna be OPQR in Esprit from West Adams to T. We wanna thank all the people that participated, and I don't know, I think we've got some certificates that we're gonna hand out. We wanna thank our staff as well for guiding us and helping us with this. We also wanna invite the public and let them know that we are gonna be having a community trash update. This is gonna be the second event that we have this year. And what it is, is an event where people can actually, instead of us going to the area to pick up trash, we have an event, we have them come by, and this, for a second time, we're gonna have it at the Casa de Amistad parking lot, and we're gonna have them have some trash bins available, they can come in, bring their trash, their debris. We're also, we're also gonna accept tires, but we're gonna limit it to four per family. Also, we wanna remind them, no hazardous materials. And this is gonna be held October 12th, from 8:00 to 12:00 PM, at the Casa de Amistad parking lot. So if you have any debris or any trash that you wanna get rid of, this is your opportunity to get rid of it. It's gonna be held October 12th again, from 8:00 to 12:00 PM, at the Casa de Amistad parking lot. And if anybody wants to volunteer, you can contact our court for the department as well.
Do we have anyone from the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department here tonight? Many of them participated. We have certificates for them, but I don't, I don't see anybody.
No, I don't see anybody.
All right. Well, we wanna, we wanna thank everyone who participated in that, in our Clean Sweep event Saturday. Really, we thank all those young folks from the Juvenile Justice Department.
Mayor, also on September the 7th, we're gonna have an electronics day. We'd normally be with the clean sweep, instead of, because they moved, we moved the clean sweep from one weekend to the next.
Did you, did you hear, did everybody hear that?
There's gonna be an electronics at Harlingen, what we call a key Harlingen beautiful now.
Can you, can you hear him?
On September the 7th, from 8:00 until 12:00, any electronics, instead of throwing them in the trash, they'll receive them there for free. So it says tired, broken, worn out electronics, chargers, power cords, anything of that sort, you can take it down there and they'll recycle it. They're gonna have this, they're trying to do it every six months, but this is a special deal, because there is no avenue down here to get rid of old computers and stuff of that sort.
That's great. Okay. Good deal. All right. Thank you for those announcements. April, item three is the approval of the minutes of June 19th, 2013. Right when the meeting is, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam, approve it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Consent agenda, I was for A, B, and C is your motion about the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda for A, for B, and for C.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take action to award benefits Cafeteria Plan for the city Harlingen employees for fiscal year 2013-14 with possible yearly renewal option, and authorize the city manager to negotiate signed city contract.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, the city hired Scott Gibbs to help us with the raging medical, which we did in the last city council meeting. He's also helping with some of the senior researchers that we have the relevant employees. He's gonna make the presentations for those items today.
Mayor, Commissioners, the city manager, this presentation is going to be for items five and six. It's the Cafeteria Plan and the Voluntary Dental Plan. So I'll go through this, and if you guys have any questions at all, please feel free to stop me anytime I'm glad to go through them. So we'll talk a little bit about the overview of the process, the current plans that we offer. We'll look at the voluntary dental analysis, and then we'll look at the Cafeteria Plan ancillary coverage analysis, recommendations, and then any questions or comments. So the request for proposal for Cafeteria Plan and Voluntary Dental Plan was released on August 2nd, 2013. Questions were due by the 9th of August. The deadline was the 15th. Copies of the proposals were forwarded to me on Friday, and then I'm here tonight to make the recommendation to you. Current plans, our voluntary dental plan currently is with MetLife. Our Cafeteria Plan and ancillary coverages are administered through Colonial. I listed the current ancillary lines of covers that we have with Colonial, with an accident policy, an accident care policy, a disability policy, cancer policy, and critical illness policy. You can see, in parentheses, I put the number of policies that they've written with city employees out beside there. One thing to keep in mind about these coverages is these are 100% employee paid. There are no city dollars that go to these. They're simply, they're paid for by the, paid for 100% by the employee as a value, and you guys offer them the value added benefit to the employees. So on voluntary dental analysis, we received quotes from these vendors. Our current vendor, MetLife, provided us with an 11.1% increase over the current rates for 12 months. Ameritas came in at about a 5.8% increase for 12 months. Delta Dental came in at a 3.5% increase for 12 months, or a 6.7% increase, which would guarantee our rates for 24 months. Guardian came in with a 10.9% increase for 12 months. Lincoln Financial came in with a 12% increase for 12 months. And United Healthcare came in with a 4.9% increase for 12 months. All dental carriers matched the current benefits that we have with MetLife. That being said, the most competitive of the bids we received was Delta Dental. Obviously, MetLife was our current vendor. They gave us an 11% increase. We tried to negotiate with MetLife upfront to get them down on that renewal, but we were unsuccessful in that. Delta Dental came in, they matched all the current benefits. Again, the increase was a 3.45% for 12 months, or a 6.71% increase for 24 months. This is a plan, the current plan design that we have, as I said, Delta Dental has matched both plans. These quotes were provided on behalf of the Shepherd and Walton and Texas Insurance, who are the current agents on the MetLife plan. So the benefits stay the same with, with Delta Dental, kind of high level analysis of the two dental plans. We have a high level offering. There's a $50 individual deductible and a $150 family deductible. Preventive dental benefits are covered at 100% under both plans. Basic coverage, which would be something like just having a filling, is covered at 100% on the low plan, 80% on a high plan. The major plan has no, the low plan has no benefits for major coverage. There is a 50% benefit for major coverage on the high plan. Endodontics and periodontics are covered at 100%, are covered at 100% under the low plan, 80% on the high plan. The benefits are paid at 90% of reasonable customary, and that's important, because it allows us most of the time for the members not to get balance bills when they go see the dentist. The calendar maximum on both plans is $1,250. The low plan does not have any coverage for orthodontia. The high plan has coverage for orthodontia at 50%, and it has a $1,000 maximum. The MetLife plan was for a one-year rate guarantee. Again, Delta matched the benefits, and you can see the increases on both. The Cafeteria Plan and Ancillary Coverage Analysis, this chart shows that we received quotes from Aflac, Allstate, Guardian, Lincoln, MetLife, SBS, Transamerica, UHC. This'll show you the coverages that they provided, the X show you the coverages that they provided for, and Colonial is the current vendor, so they weren't, went on there, but they did submit a proposal. The, so that's the lines of coverages that they provide. I'll talk a little bit about each of the coverages, and then just know that in addition to offering those voluntary coverages, they provide us with our Cafeteria Plan, which is our Section 125 plan, which allows us to run our, run these deductions on a pre-tax basis, as well as they provide the flexible spending account that the employees can utilize to put money back for certain items, healthcare related expenses, dental related expenses, and vision related expenses. So the top three accident responses, and what an accident plan does is an accident plan covers, the employee pays a monthly premium, and then if they have any accidents, it pays a cash benefit to them for those accidents. You can see that for an accidental death of an employee or a spouse, there would be a benefit of $20,000. Accidental death of a child would be $4,000. If somebody had to use an ambulance, the benefit would pay at $120 per accident. Blood or plasma, there was transfusion, it would be $300 per accident. Fracture, any type of fracture, depending on the fracture, what bones broke, would pay anywhere between $90 to $4,500. There's a, an in-hospital pro-admission benefit of $750, and then there's a hospital confinement benefit of $175. And physical therapy benefit of $25 per visit, transportation benefit if you had to be transported between facilities. The current rates with Colonial, these were the top three responses that we received, Aflac, and then United Healthcare, and you can see these. And again, these benefits are paid 100% by the employees. The top three critical illness responses, what a critical illness benefit is, is again, it's a separate policy that an employee can purchase, and it protects them in case that they have some type of major illness that happens over the years. The benefit with, the benefit with Colonial currently is the member can choose between $5,000 or $100,000 in coverage. They can get 50% for a spouse coverage, or 25%. And then should they have one of these dreaded illnesses, it'll pay that benefit. So if somebody were to have a heart attack, if somebody took a $20,000 policy and they had a heart attack, they'd get a cash benefit of $20,000 to help them offset some of their costs that possibly the health plan didn't pay. You can see the other benefits for stroke, major organ transplant, permanent paralysis, end-stage renal. Coronary artery bypass surgery is a benefit of 25%. And most of these plans also have a health screening benefit involved. Again, Aflac and United Healthcare, you know, provided, provided good responses as well. And then on the cancer responses, and what they, most of the critical illness riders have a cancer benefit too, so they'll have a cancer benefit. So sometimes, a member, if they wanted to, they could take a separate cancer policy that's just, just for cancer, and it'll, it would pay them additional funds for that. So currently, the way the cancer plan works is once you're diagnosed, for instance, you have a $75 cancer screening benefit, your first diagnosis is $1,000, and then it's going to pay for, it's gonna pay you cash for services as they get rendered. So for annual radiation or chemotherapy, you'd get $200 per day. You have a surgical benefit up to $3,000. You do have a daily hospital confinement that pays you cash when you're, when you're in the hospital. And at the bottom, you can see the rates and for these three. So those are the, were the, you know, the three main policies. On the recommendations, it's my staff's recommendation to move the benefit, move the dental benefit to Delta Dental. I would recommend taking the 24-month guarantee, it's 6.7%. That way, you're protected from getting a large increase next year, and we could lock in for 24 months and not have to deal with this for 24 months. The other recommendation would be to stay with Colonial. The employees seem to be pretty happy with the benefits offered. Colonial and Aflac were really the only two that could offer the full range, offer the Cafeteria Plan, paid for it 100%, and offer the other lines of coverage, all the, the other lines of coverage that were there. So based on that, and where the rates were, you know, with Colonial Life, there's no rate increase to what the employees are currently paying, so everything would stay the same that's coming out of their paycheck. And again, all these dollars are employee, are employee paid dollars. The city does not contribute to these plans.
I think the dental was not, yeah, the dental was not part of the cafeteria, that's why it's separate.
Well, the dental is, it's separate, but it's run through the Cafeteria Plan, so employees, the dollar amounts that come out of their paycheck are on a pre-tax basis.
Okay. And so Colonial will manage it, but they'll buy it through the other government.
Right. Colonial, it runs through Colonial's Cafeteria Plan, the Delta Dental is the plan administrator for the, Delta Dental would be the plan administrator if the recommendation was taken.
Colonial absorbs all the cost of paying for it?
Yes, yes, sir. And Delta is probably, has probably one of the strongest networks in the valley from a dental standpoint.
The Cafeteria Plans, 2012, the federal government had it at $2,500, correct?
Yes.
And then the federal government raised taxes on America this year by reducing it to $2,000, correct?
No, it's still, it's still $2,500. It's locked in at $2,500.
Okay. Do we have a clue for next year?
We don't. Everything we've seen is it's gonna stay at $2,500, but we don't, we don't know for sure. I mean, there's, there's a lot of jockeying going on in Washington right now around the healthcare reform bill, so it would not surprise me if something got changed, but I can tell you for, for, you know, as of right now, where it stands is it's at $2,500.
Okay, it was reduced from $3,000 to $2,500. That's where it attached.
Actually, on the health, the health plan could, could go up to $5,000 in the old days, and then they reduced it to the $2,500.
And then the previous insurance that we voted upon, group life, disability, and health insurance, is that available under the Cafeteria Plan deduction?
Yes. All the, the ones that are eligible will, do run through the Cafeteria Plan, so the medical, the life up to the amount before it becomes an imputed income is run through there, and it's fully included.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, first item, this is to award the Benefits Cafeteria Plan. We have a motion to do that.
I'll make the motion, we award the Cafeteria Plan to Colonial Life. Just continue what we already have.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, is consider and take action to award a voluntary dental plan to the city Harlingen employees for fiscal year 2013-14, possible yearly renewal option, and authorize the city manager to negotiate signed city contract. Is there a motion to award that?
I'll make a motion to award the dental contract for a two-year period to Delta Dental. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Thank you. Item seven is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading to install stop signs on Cora Street at the intersection of First Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens in the area. It was a concern for the lack of traffic control at the intersection of Cora and First Street. Staff made a non-site visit and determined the need for it. Several men to install the stop sign at the intersection.
That's the city, enter the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance authorizing placement of stop center in Cora Street East, the intersection of First Street. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of an older vehicle failed to stop and yield without a right of obedience. The stop signs here unauthorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances providing for publication or obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make the motion, we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Thank you. Item A, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading approving a negotiated resolution between the city of Harlingen and Texas Gas Service regarding company's May 1st, 2013 cost of service adjustment filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments inconsistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, providing for recovery of city's reasonable necessary rate case expenses, adopting savings clause, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with requirements of the Texas Civil Meetings Act, declaring effective date, appealing any prior ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the city's legal counsel in District 8.
This is, Texas Gas Service, they made the first file for a cost of service adjustment, which they can do under the state law Utilities Code. The Real Brandy Service Area, which is made up of about 30 cities, and I gave you most of this in your back, was hired, represented by our outside counsel, Jeffrey Gay, who represented all the valley cities, about 30. And they negotiated with them with regard to the rate. Our expert determined there was a justification for a rate increase, but we still, our experts did negotiate the rate down by about $70,000 less than what the company was asking for. And the settlement has been entered into between the parties. This is, so all the valley cities now are being asked to adopt this ordinance, to approve the settlement, and based on the recommendation of our attorney, who indicated this would be the thing to do rather than litigating this issue. You just can't justify litigation. So I'm asking you tonight to go ahead and approve this ordinance to comply with the, and adopt and approve the settlement agreement, along with all the other valley cities.
See if I have any questions. Would you read the caption now?
An ordinance, the city commission, the city of Harlingen, Texas, approving a negotiated resolution between the city and Texas Gas Service, TGS, or the company regarding the company's May 1st, 2013 cost of service adjustment, COSA, filing declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, providing for the recovery of the city's reasonable necessary rate case expenses, adopting the savings clause, determining that the ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Civil Meetings Act, declaring an effective date, which appealing any prior ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, or requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the city's legal counsel.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take action to abandon and vacate a 20-foot utility and drainage easement, being a 0.147 acre piece of land located on the north end of Block 3, Block 1, Cricket West subdivision generally located between Expressway 7783 and Sesame Drive West.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to abandon a 20-foot utility and drainage easement to allow for a proposed hotel. The subject easement is not in use. Disagreed with subject easement here, it's on the northern end of this property, it's a 20-foot easement. The request was reviewed by the city engineer and the required utility companies. Neither had any objections to the request. The attached deed or recording is to abandon this drainage utility easement. No taking questions.
Why was it included? Why did the city probably require it in the first place? Why did they require it?
It was at the time that the drainage would be used in the rear of the property in that kind of case. There's no utilities at this point.
Is there an easement on the adjoining properties?
There is. There's easements on, there's one on the sides of the property, there's another on the northern end of the property.
But the ones in question is the one on the, on the east, that would be the east end?
It would be, I guess it would be the, is it the east end?
East end, okay. But what my question is, is on the east end, does that, does that continue to go north and south?
It does go in this direction, which would be on the, there's a one for the further subdivisions in the north.
Correct. But we wouldn't be restricting anybody on, on the north or south of that property by eliminating the easement?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'd move that we vacate the 20-foot easement.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Item 10, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone, not designated to the end of District 2, residential mobile home, M.A., District 4, Lot 160, East Estates Unit 4, located at 15866 Washington Palm Drive, applicant, work at Q, at the E.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property, which would be this property right here, from not designated to mobile home district, to allow for a building permit to build a carport on this property. This is a case where the applicant has already constructed the carport, it was built without a permit. As part of the building permit process, the property has to be rezoned, of course, it's a similar landmark project. You can see most of the area is developed with mobile homes and a few single-family residents, so the zoning is consistent with the land use. This is a subject property located from the north, this is a subject carport attached to the mobile home. It's located from the east, located from the west. The future land use shows this area as a high-density residential, so the request is consistent with the future land use map. Public hearing was conducted at P&amp;Z Commission, there was no concerns addressed. Effective property owners with a two-minute radius were also notified. Staff didn't receive any objections. Staff has recommended approval as well as a P&amp;Z Commission. No taking questions on that.
With it, having all those mobile homes on it, when it was brought into the city, why did it have the not designated?
At the time, that's how the annexation plan was approved, the not designated, zoning dish, you know, you have huge annexations coming in and it's zoned with the current land use.
Are we gonna tackle them one at a time?
Are we gonna tackle them one at a time?
At this point, we are, that's the direction staff was given. Staff was referred to rezone that whole area, or due to city initiative, rezoning the area that was annexed. As a result, the annexation would be under litigation, that's why it's being pulled at this point.
Get back on the, get back on the other picture. What you've got there are the other mobile homes.
The area, the area, okay.
It's all mobile homes, why not?
Right, that's what staff has recommended approval.
Right. But the big question that I keep asking, is this like the third or fourth one that we've done? Where it's like, they're all non...
Right, they're not designated.
They're all mobile homes in that whole neighborhood. If you go back to the brown, that's 100% mobile homes. You go forward three slides.
What's involved in, that would be onerous, in order to redesignate the whole thing?
We just, we would just notify the property owners within that whole area, so that's within 200-foot radius and take it before P&amp;Z, like any other zoning request.
What is it caused us every time we do this?
Why don't we just do it, and then feel confident that we're not gonna have any problem with our litigation? Just move forward with it.
We could do that, that's your impression.
Yeah, because the mobile homes are cheap to rent to put a bill for me.
Okay, I want to bring that back as an action item to, you know, to direct the staff to move forward with that.
Okay.
I'd move approval of the second rezoning.
Let's see, I've got to conduct a public hearing first. A, it's a public hearing, is there anyone to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezon request. I'll ask Mr. Willbe to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 07-27, the City of Harlingen rezoning lot 160 upon East Estates Unit 4, located at 15866 Washington Palm Drive, not designated, district to residential mobile home district, providing for publication, obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Now.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business, smoke shop, and general retail district located at 1218 Morgan Boulevard, bearing legal description of lots 34 and 35, Block 1, Delmar 2 subdivision, applicant, Baticia Yanez.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a smoke shop or smoking accessories out of existing apparel shop, it's located out of 800 square foot suite on the east side of Morgan Boulevard, which would be this property right there. The subject property actually has a mixed use, the subject property on the, it's considered the northern, basically the eastern end of this property has a mechanic shop, which is a minor mechanic worker who has their own materials, their own property. And on the 800 square foot building, that's where they have the apparel shop and they want to sell smoking accessories. Basically, the percentage makeup would be about 25% for the smoking accessories at tobacco, they have the products, and then the other 25% would be for the clothing, and of course, 50% would be the mechanic shop, which is more mechanic work. Generally, the hours of operations are from Monday through Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. This is the subject building where they have the smoke shop. You can see this fence, a chain link fence around the property, and the mechanic shop stores the rear of the property. You can see most of that area is generally developed with commercial, you have a park here, but of course, the residential stores the rear of the property. As a result of it being adjacent to a residential district, they are required to fence, a solid fence in the rear of the property, that can use landscaping as an alternative, which staff has recommended, as long as it's planted in a dense pattern in the rear of their property. You see the view of the fence over the opposite alley of the property, this is the old property. Staff didn't notify property owners with the 200-foot radius. Staff didn't receive any objections to the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, there's no concerns, and staff and the P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval, subject to the applicant retaining their parking, providing the required fence and or landscaping, maintaining their proper permits, of course, complying with all the city departments, as well as providing surveillance of the property. No taking questions on that.
One quick question, on the other items that they'll be selling there, there hasn't been any issues with some of these shops, where in times past, there's been sort of attempts to circumvent the existing law and statutes. They're not gonna be selling any type of, when we say substances here, any of those types of synthetic materials?
Correct. And that's included in the ordinance.
All right, now I've got item A, a public hearing, is anyone to like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading, the above mentioned specific use permit, and ask the city attorney to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to the TC Division to allow adult business in a general retail district located at 1218 Morgan Boulevard, bearing legal description of lots 34 and 35, Block 1, Delmar 2 subdivision, subject to 1, providing and maintaining the required parking in accordance with city regulations, including the addition of an aisle, pole sign, and placard for the required handicap parking space. 2, providing for and maintaining a solid screening fence of redwood and/or cedar not less than six feet in height, or landscaping in lieu of a dividing fence, if all plants use landscaping screens are implanted in a dense pattern and shelf on reaching maturity to be not less than six feet in height. Initial landscaping height shall be no less than 40 inches. 3, complying with the requirements and obtaining proper permits for all signs on the property. 4, providing and maintaining video surveillance for the 30-day retention of the video. 5, complying with the code of ordinance of chapter 130.7 on lawful substances. And 6, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, fire prevention, police departments, providing for publication or obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 12, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from planned development to a district which allowed for 30 single-family residential lots and one commercial lot. 2, general retail district for 7.96 plus or minus acres, out of Block B, Voice Track subdivision located on the north side of Wilson Road, between Hand Road and Expressway 77. The applicant, Wilson, developing care of Eddie Gutierrez.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone this property here from planned development to general retail district. This property was previously zoned, general retail, uh, in 2007, and they resumed this property to plan development, which would allow some mixed-use development subdivision, which would be for 36, single-family residential lots, and then a commercial lot along the front of the property, which was this proposed subdivision. No improvements were ever completed, and the subdivision was canceled, so the applicant wants to revert to the original zoning, which is general retail. And this is most of the area on Wilson, generally developed with commercial use, some residential use in the area, so this school took the south of the property, so this property is currently vacant. The future land use plan, although it does show it as high-density residential, it's not generally consistent with the plan. It is consistent with the existing commercial zoning pattern that you have here in the area, as well as the generally consistent with commercial land use in the area. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, there was no concerns addressed at the meeting. The affected property owners within the 200-foot radius were also notified, and staff didn't receive any concerns regarding the zoning request. Staff and the P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the request.
And so the red is commercial?
The red is commercial, general retail.
And so this property is an island of residential zoned within a, within the sea of commercial?
It's a mixed-use development with a commercial zoning, it's a combination of commercial and residential, mostly.
All right, item A, a public hearing, is there anyone to like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoning request, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, the City of Harlingen rezoning from planned development district which allowed for 36 single-family residential lots, and a commercial lot, the general retail district for 7.96 acres out of Block B, Voice Track subdivision located on the north side of Wilson Road, between Hand Road and Expressway 77, providing for publication and obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 13, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow Harlingen Dance Hall and Light Industry District located at 1510 North Commerce, bearing legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, Casablanca subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge, dance hall, an existing 4700 square foot building that's located on the east side of Commerce Street. This is a subject building here. This establishment has always been used as a bar lounge, and the previous bar lounge was under the name of the Talbotson Bar, and prior to that, it was Pink Flamingo, and prior to that, it was known as the Hideout. You see the property's on the east side of Commerce Street, it's generally surrounded with a commercial use, and there are some apartment uses in the area, as well as to the east of the property. The affected property owners within the 200-foot radius were notified, staff didn't receive any concerns, provided the request. Generally, the hours of operation would be, this dance hall would be from Friday through Sunday from, Friday would be from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, and on Saturday would be from 8:00 p.m. through 1:00 p.m., and then on Sunday would be from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this is generally floor pattern of the establishment, and you see this surrounding commercial uses in the area. The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, neither department had any objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval, subject to the applicant retaining the required parking, providing a licensed security guard, as well as providing surveillance video with a 30-day retention of the video, obtaining his proper permits, and of course, complying with the appropriate city departments. No taking questions, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
If I remember right, some of the parking requirement is fulfilled by the adjacent property owners?
That's correct. He is borrowing parking from the adjacent restaurant, which is owned by the same property owner, as well as from the apartments on this area, as well as from a heavy repair shop, which is right adjacent to the property.
It used to be a dance hall before.
Right, it's always been a dance hall. Of course, one of the requirements for the ordinance is he's gotta maintain the required parking, so when he comes and applies for his permits, we're gonna check the city to make sure he complies with the required parking.
All right, I'll go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone to like to speak for or against the issues of this specific use permit?
For the record, Jose Rodriguez Jr., who went there and I understand the road, I am for the business, any business, open up in Harlingen, it's a good thing for Harlingen, hopefully bring some retail dollars back, but I have a major concern, you know, there's two people who can probably answer this question. Who ensures that when you pass a city ordinance, that the compliance of regulations, you know, what you're passing tonight, which is the parking, the video, et cetera, whose responsibility is it? Is it the chief of police, you know, who monitors this? You know, there are certain rules for security officers? Or is it Mr. Olivo? Because I keep getting mixed answers, that the police aren't gonna be checking bars for compliance of these rules. So if you're passing this type of rules, then you should have some sort of personnel that are assigned for the compliance part. Thank you.
Anyone else to like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and go to item B, consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific use permit, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number of 07-27, of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permits to Joel Tolard, to allow a bar lounge, dance hall, Light Industries District located at 1510 North Commerce, bearing legal description, Lot 1, Block 1, Casablanca subdivision, subject to 1, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces. 2, improving the existing parking lot to meet city standards. 3, must obtain and maintain the proper state and TABC permits. 4, meet and provide and maintain video surveillance on all entrance and exits, and maintain a 30-day retention of the video. 5, must provide adequate lighting on the premises. 6, must provide a licensed security guard. 7, complying with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, fire, and police departments prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, providing for publication and obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 14, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to renew an SUP for existing bar lounge, or retail, I mean, a general retail district located at 1105 South Ham Lane, bearing legal description of 3.4740 acres, out of Block 33, street plate survey, 139 slash 297 slash 298, applicant, Daniel Machaca.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to continue allowing the operation of a bar lounge, or 2700 square foot building located on 1105 South Ham Lane, this is a subject property. This SUP was actually approved back in January of this year. One of the conditions of the permit, it was limited for six months, and the applicant was required to apply for renewal of the permit. The certificate of occupancy was actually issued in February of this past year. There's been no changes to the operation of the establishment. The operation continues to be operating from Wednesdays through Saturday from 8:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. The appropriate city departments, the fire prevention, building, health, and fire reviewed the request, and neither of the subject departments had any objections to the request. The police department also reviewed the renewal of the specific use permit, and are recommending approval of the request, subject to the applicant continuing to provide the required licensed security guard, the surveillance video with a 30-day retention, and as well as appropriate lighting on the premises. This is the subject property, the seat is on the corner of, obviously, the corner of Business 83 and Ham Lane. The affected property owners were notified within the 200-foot radius, staff didn't receive any objections to the request. The public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. In addition, a report was also included from the police department within a six-month period. There was only two incidents which triggered a report on the establishment. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are withholding approval, subject to the applicant continuing to maintain the required parking, providing surveillance video with 30-day retention, obtaining the required permits, as well as providing the required lighting on the premises, and as well as complying with all the requirements from the appropriate city departments. No taking questions on that.
All right, I've got to item A, public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone to like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and item B, consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific use permit, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, number 07-27, the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Daniel Machaca, to allow an adult business bar lounge in a general retail district located at 1105 South Ham Lane, bearing legal description of 3.4740 acres, out of Lot Block 33, store plate subdivision survey, 139 slash 297 slash 298, subject to 1, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces. 2, maintaining the proper state TABC permits. 3, providing and maintaining video surveillance on all entrances and exits, and maintain the 30-day retention of the video. 4, provide adequate lighting on the premises. 5, provide a licensed security guard. 6, continue to comply with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, and fire prevention departments, providing for publication and obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 15, consider take action to appoint an official representative and also a representative, Navigos Tohia, came for a branch of fiscal year 2013-14.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Chino for that position. I currently hold that, and it requires two people, one for the, the main one, one for the alternate, and I don't mind being the alternate, right now Mr. Vesmar is, unless he wants to stay with it.
Okay, Sub.
Well, I'm making a nomination that we, I just probably need a second, don't we, to allow him to have that?
We don't second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, Commissioner Sanches. Now we need an alternate.
Well, somebody needs to nominate me, or can I nominate?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Fong Victor Leal as an alternative to Miggo Tohia.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Commissioner Leal, and the continued fine work of Navigos Tohia. Item 16, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I'd like to appoint Daniel Lai to the golf course advisory board. I'd like to appoint Daniel Lai into the golf course advisory board. It's a reappointment. Yeah, Harlingen trial, Jerry Wayne Lowery.
And I have the parks advisory board saying Jerry Wayne Lowery.
Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We've passed items 17 and 18 since the action of the EDC tabled their action yesterday. So we'll go then to item 19 of citizen communication. First, on the agenda is Nora Rosef.
Good evening, I'm Norman Rosef. I live at 1015 Sinizo. I've come before you to speak in favor of the acquisition of Blasket Tower. Five years ago, next month, I wrote an article about the history of that building. The opening sentence was, "Recent developments posit the possibilities Blasket Tower, Harlingen's tallest building at nine stories, may be recycled into a multi-use facility." Well, of course, nothing transpired. That building was first conceived in 1926 by a man named Robert W. Baxter. He was a lawyer who had gone to the University of Michigan and become a legislature in Arkansas. He paid $17,000 for the lot that that building is situated on. Originally, it was supposed to be a seven-story building costing $125,000, but after a few months, it evolved into a nine-story building, which cost all of $125,000. The building is concrete, block, and brick. It's a type one construction, which means it's non-combustible. If you have seen pictures of the building going up in 1927, you can see that it's very extremely sturdy. It has, at present, good bones, as I would call it. Somewhere in the building, there's a time capsule that Mr. Baxter put in the building. So it'd be interesting, should we start to renovate the building, to discover that time capsule. The building was originally called the Baxter Building, and then it was called the Rio Grande National Life Insurance Building.
Give about 30 seconds more, Mr. Rosef. Give about 30 seconds more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, sorry.
The prospects for the property are exciting. About a year ago, I met with Manuel Del Poza, and he had showed me some diagrammatic pictures of the building with the partitions removed, and it has a tremendous amount of possibilities. I strongly urge that you go forward in it, because I think it is the keystone to rejuvenating and creating a new downtown.
Thank you.
I have a copy of the history. I'll leave for the secretary, and she can reproduce it, and we give you copies.
Thank you very much. All right, next is Frances Delio.
My name is Frances Delio, and I live at 520 North Commerce. And what this gentleman was saying about this building here, I don't agree. Because you all are gonna spend a lot of taxpayers' money putting it back. There's a lot of buildings here that are very good too, that they can be fixed, but it takes a lot of money, and that tax payers money. If you're gonna buy it for $300,000 or $600,000 or whatever it is, how much is it gonna take you to fix it? It doesn't take little money, because that place is in a very bad shape. Now, this is taxpayers' money that you can be using for other things. You can use them for parks, for alleys. You can use it for a lot of things if you really sit and write what you could use this money for. It doesn't have to be used for that building. Okay? Now, there has been a lot of buildings I could fix, like Ms. Coletti's building too, which they spent, or you all spent, or gave out, or $1.2 million. That's a lot of taxpayers' money as well. Are you not her lawyer, Mr. Boswell, my friend? So you need to be careful here. You are working with taxpayers' money. Is this why the people voted for you all, to do this, for the people of this town? You need to do better things with the money that you all have, other than spending it that way. So I hope you already think of what you're gonna vote on and what you're gonna do, and if you are gonna get this building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Your review.
Jose Rodriguez, 23, I sent the road for the record. You know, when this voting came up before the 4B, I'm not against fixing or making the downtown look bad, look good or bad, et cetera. What I want to emphasize on is you all are working on a budget. It hasn't been finalized yet, okay? The 4B, as you well know, Mayor, has spent a lot of money on good projects for the community. Now, we've decided, we've decided to do a facade to fix up, you know, the downtown and give it an image. And then facade is gonna cost more than the amount that's posted here. I believe that the city has been rather vague in their attempt at trying to pass a major project. I look here at the agenda item that was gonna be considered to nine, and it says, "Plus other valuable consideration contingent." What is valuable consideration? What does that mean? Such as, do you know what valuable consideration is, Mr. Leal? Do you know what it is? City Commissioners, do you all know what valuable consideration? How much money are we gonna eventually allocate for this building? All right, number two, the number two subject. Mrs. Lupita Ramirez was at yesterday's meeting. She told me a quick story of how she was treated during her building, that code enforcement is going after her. And the fact that they weren't there to provide a Spanish interpreter, and that it was her obligation. And they were rather rude to either the board or the staff, I would like to, you know, I believe it was the board members, that they had an obligation to do, to bring an interpreter. I think this is a slap in the face of Mrs. Ramirez. She's going to the same troubles. She's a, I'm about, I'm looking at the practice, you have five seconds. And I believe that when staff, especially you, Mr. Yerina, you have an obligation to make sure that when people come up for a meeting, this town, whether we like it or not, is 86% Hispanic. So we can't treat Hispanic people differently. Thank you.
That concludes the citizen communication. So ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. 59 minutes.